This is something else.
Okay, she got something else.
Uh huh, that's for me. Thank you. You're next.
We'll get started. All right, good evening and welcome. Oh, yes. All right, welcome.
It's happening.
Welcome to the February tenth Bengals edition of Xenia City Council. This is the last meeting before the big game, so I would like to thank my colleagues up here for indulging in the Bengals theme for tonight. At this time, we will have an invocation. Pastor John, is he here?
I don't see him.
No?
I don't like John yet.
Okay, so we'll ask Vice President Urschel to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Sarah Mays. Thank you.
Great work, guys. Let's stand for a time of prayer if we could. Father, thank you for today. We just thank you for watching over our city last week and all of our first responders and city workers that were out just on really long shifts. God, thank you for protecting them and keeping them safe while they were keeping us safe by getting our roads cleaned and taking care of folks in the times when the rest of us were staying inside our homes. They were out working for us, and we thank you for that, Father. Thank you for your grace on us, God, that we can have an open forum tonight, a council where we can meet and discuss. And, Father, so we just pray for your wisdom, pray that we could be good stewards of the city, Father, and that we could work towards the prosperity and the welfare of all our citizens here in our city, Father. Just help us lean hard on you. We just praise, thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Urschel, for the invocation. Thank you, Mayor Mays, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will call the meeting to order at this time and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Smith?
Here. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. The minutes are before us. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes, please?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. This time, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? No? All right. Seeing none, roll call to accept, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Abstain.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have no special presentations scheduled for this evening, so we'll move right into audience comments. This is the opportunity for a meeting for the public to address City Council. If they come into the podium, give us your name, address for the record. Limit your comments three to four minutes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me, and I was brought to attention that there was something about Lexington Park that's going to happen.
Sir, could you please state your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Clayton Kell Brady.
Yes.
From Xenia, Ohio. And had a very productive meeting with the city manager, Bernard Marion, with a couple with three of my friends, two of which is in the audience, Mitchell Waterman and Angus. The other person was Curtis Simons. He was unable to attend this evening, but that was a very productive meeting. And now that, I heard something about y'all maybe putting funds in the Lexington Park for renaming it, or I'm not for sure. I was just brought here to thank you, one, because that Lexington Park is dear to my heart. Was born in nineteen fifty-six and first started going up there in nineteen sixty-two. And it just wasn't just going up there. It was a religious thing for me because I loved sports. And so then when I got older, we'd spend twelve hours a day up there. But then, since then, it kind of went by the wayside, and me and my friends were trying to revitalize that part of the town, and hopefully that will expand into the neighborhood and back to the middle of town. But I did come here to thank you, and if there's anything that I could do to help with the awareness and getting community support, I'm here. I'm a volleyball, junior varsity volleyball coach at the high school, and I coached seventh grade girls' basketball and softball at Warner Middle School. Been doing that for the last sixteen, twenty years off of it. And that's all I have to say today. Now have a great evening and continue to do the work for the city, and if I can be of any help, please reach out.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Anyone else care to come to the podium, address City Council at this time? Going once. Anyone else in the back? You guys good? All right, thank you, Mr. Brady. Normally, we don't banner back to our commentator. However, did want to let you know that we have put Lexington Park on the radar, actually starting last year, and councils visited that facility. We've also talked about future plans for the park. We have actually a council event on Saturday where we'll be talking about that as well. It is our intention to engage the community on the future of that park. Also, that was mentioned, we had a neighborhood night out last fall. That was fairly well-attended, so we appreciate those citizens that came out, gave us some input on Lexington Park, and that'll certainly be a project that we'll be looking forward to this year. Thank you. All right. If no one else is coming to the podium, I will ask City Clerk, do we have any specific emails tonight? Okay, thank you. So a lot of engagement on social media over the last week due to the snowstorm. City Manager will be speaking with that, about that tonight in his presentation to council. So would like to thank those citizens who have expressed their concerns and opportunities for our Public Service Department with snow removal. I would like to mention, this is probably our biggest snowstorm in three years, in ten. A lot of snow, a tight window to get rid of it, and hard places to put it. So we'll be working on that with Public Service, and that'll be addressed here a little bit later this evening. Our first item under Old Business is Ordinance twenty-two-zero-one. This is a second reading repealing Chapter fourteen ninety-two titled Registration of Vacant Commercial and Industrial Buildings of the Xenia City Code. This was introduced by Councilman Dean at our last regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any discussion regarding this matter? All right. Roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item under Old Business is Ordinance twenty-two-zero-two, also a second reading. This is amending Section four fifty-two point one-one of the City of Xenia traffic code. This was introduced by Mayor Mays at our last regular meeting.
Thank you, sir. I will move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any further discussion regarding this ordinance? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-F, also titled a second reading. This is accepting American Rescue Plan Act water and wastewater infrastructure program grant funding for the Rover Forest sanitary sewer slip lining project. This is introduced by Councilman Scrivens at the January twenty-seventh regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for passage. We are getting a grant, in this case, for five hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and our local match is only a hundred and eighty-seven five. So I think we're getting a real good deal on this. I move for passage, sir.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Further discussion or concerns regarding this? Seeing any? Can we get a roll call, please?
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, our first item is Ordinance twenty-two-zero-three titled An Emergency and Also Public Hearing. This is providing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Xenia, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, declaring an emergency. This is the two thousand twenty-two annual appropriation ordinance. At this time, I will turn it over to our City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This ordinance constitutes our final budget approval for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. The city is required by our local charter, as well as the Ohio revised code, to develop, hold a public hearing for, and approve a spending plan that would outline the suggested expenditures for the ensuing fiscal year. The appropriations as presented this evening total seventy-eight million eight hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. This is for a total for all funds, including our general services, our utilities, as well as our internal service functions. As we remind our public every year, the seventy-eight million dollars is not the total we will spend in cash, but rather this is the budgeted total where we have to reflect things like transfers, inter-fund loans, and so forth, so it's an inflated number based on required accounting principles. We estimate that the more realistic cash amount is less than sixty thousand, about fifty-eight million, excuse me, less than sixty million, about fifty-eight million or so. Councils previously authorized our temporary budget for the year, and that has sustained us through operations here in January, but we are at that point where we are requesting and recommending the final budgets. The, there are a few changes to note with council from the temporary to the final. A couple of those I will point out, we've updated our health insurance rates based on the most accurate numbers that came in after the initial publishing of the budget. We did talk with council about community events for this year, so there's a minor adjustment there, as well as the IT position and a few other things like that. So nothing that's significant in terms of the dollar amount, no multimillion-dollar changes, but again, just wanted to know there were a few tweaks from that temporary budget that you saw in December. The budget as presented maintains all services at current levels and provides for all of our capital programming for this particular fiscal year. All of our budget funds are anticipated to have positive balances, and the city is projected to well exceed its reserve fund policy requirement that we maintain. The Budget and Finance Committee has met and reviewed all of budget matters, had a good discussion here a week or two ago. I believe there's general endorsement from the committee in terms of the state of this budget. So this evening, staff is requesting the public hearing and that the ordinance be approved as an emergency to allow us to get that into full effect for the continuation of services through the remainder of this year.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to remind the general public, we have been operating under a temporary budget. So at this time, I'll open a public hearing and ask for anyone that would like to come and speak in favor of the city budget for this year. Please come to the podium, give us your name, address for the record, limit your comments three to four minutes, please. All right. If anyone cared to come to the podium and speak not in favor of this year's city budget, you may do so at this time. Come to the podium, give us your name, address for the record, limit your comments three to four minutes. Thank you. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion to approve the fiscal year budget ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two as an emergency.
I'll move as an emergency.
Thank you. Moved as an emergency by Mayor Mays. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any other discussion regarding the budget for this year? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two-g is titled An Emergency. This is authorizing the sale of city-owned properties at eight twenty-five and eight forty-three North Detroit Street to Carl W. and Kimberly Ray Williams and declaring an emergency. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, sir. Staff continues at the direction of council to seek to divest of underused or unneeded properties with the intent of returning these sites back to a higher, better use. To this end, this evening, staff is presenting Resolution twenty-two-G, which if approved would authorize the sale of two city-owned parcels located on North Detroit Street. These parcels constitute a long vacant lot situated on the high-visibility mixed-use corridor here in our community. The subject lots were offered for sale to adjoining property owners and were listed with a local Realtor, upon which the latter process, we received a competitive purchase offer of fourteen thousand dollars from Carl and Kimberly Williams. Mr. and Mrs. Williams indicate their intention with the property is to construct a single-family residence to be used as an Airbnb. As far as I know, they are aware of zoning requirements and limitations, and staff believes this is a fair purchase price and a good use of the property that is currently underutilized. We are requesting the item be approved this evening as an emergency to us, so as to expedite the very lengthy process of closing. We've already been engaged in, you know, some back and forth with them, so that we want to respect their time and expedite this as much as possible. So requesting this be considered as an emergency this evening.
Thank you for that report. Any questions for the City Manager at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just note that the Property Management Committee also recommended that we divest this property.
All right. Thank you. So noted. All right. Any other comments or questions for the City Manager? At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the, authorizing the sale as an emergency, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Seeing no other comments, I will move for roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution twenty-two-h. This is just an introduction. This is authorizing the sale of real property at one ninety-four East Church Street, formerly known as the Carnegie Library, to O'Neill's Catering LLC, and also repealing Resolution twenty-one-dash-W. Mr. Merriman, would you care to explain?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Council has recently authorized the sale of the site, which is, of course, the local historic Carnegie Library, previously to a firm called CLX LLC. Upon our efforts to finalize and execute the purchase agreement, staff learned that a change occurred with the firm's partnership arrangement, resulting in a substantive change to the circumstances upon which council had previously approved the sale, and we thought it appropriate to bring that back for some reconsideration. With the, with that, the former partners for CLX have both been asked to submit some updated proposals with their plan and intended reuse and so forth. With that, with the information from those proposals, staff has conducted follow-up meetings with the Property Management Committee, and of course, we have discussed with the full body of council these sales alternatives. Tonight's action in Resolution twenty-two-h is the result of the direction of council in terms of its decision to recommend or seek sale of the property to O'Neill's Catering LLC. This is a local firm that is seeking a new venture. It's a local business that many of us have enjoyed, that Suites Boutique. And of course, the proprietor is one of those original partners with CLX, and they were not able to continue that partnership. Again, with the approval of this resolution, this would repeal the prior resolution from last year, authorizing the original sale, and then allow us to move forward with negotiation and execution of a purchase contract with O'Neill's. So this evening, we are recommending introduction of the resolution that would allow us to execute this, and we hope usher an opportunity for a really great project here in downtown Xenia.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the City Manager tonight regarding this? Comments?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just not for the City Manager specifically, but to the Development Director and everyone who was involved in shaping this deal. This was a hard deal to put together. Most real estate deals pretty easy to put together. You got a buyer and a seller. Well, here we had some complications, and I want to compliment everybody who had a hand in making this deal work. So looking to close this deal in short order. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other comments regarding this? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to add that we had a good follow-up conversation with the other party that was not awarded the opportunity, and I think we're leaving that situation on very good terms there, continuing to look at some other opportunities in our community. But it's a good sign for our marketplace in Xenia that a building that sat as long vacant as this one has, with not only being historic but having a lot of unique issues because of its age, that we have multiple parties interested, and they believe there's an opportunity to invest in something that will turn a profit here in our downtown. So that's a really good sign for our community. Applaud folks who want to not only take on the obligation, but really the responsibility of helping to nurture and maintain a historic building. So kudos to these folks for stepping up.
All right. Thank you. Just real quick, so for the general public, how long did the city have possession of the Carnegie Library?
We got possession, I think, with council's resolution in November. Yeah, November. The original intent was to be able to, and again, a little bit of clarification in history, we, of course, were working with the county who had acquired the property through tax foreclosure and had had to control the property for many, many years. The county wanted to encourage the redevelopment revitalization of this property, so they moved very quickly last fall to transfer the property to us through legislative action at the county level. We didn't anticipate that was going to happen quite that fast, and it happened before the partnership agreement was fully vetted, and again, resulting in eventually not, the parties to the LLC not being able to come to terms. And so that's why this process has been elongated a little bit. But again, we've, we are currently in ownership, and through this arrangement, we may have responsibility for the building for another sixty to ninety days. We would hope to, not too much beyond that.
Right. So it's our intent as a city to flip a vacant building. It's not our policy to encourage vacant buildings?
Absolutely. And I think we, perhaps there's some further explanation. The county is limited by statute and how it can divest a property. They have to take sealed bids or auction. They're very limited. Municipalities are empowered, much more flexibility with transactions, and under these circumstances, it made sense to transfer the property to the city so the city could then work with these prospective redevelopment agents, where the county really didn't have the ability to do that short of a sealed bid or an auction process.
All right. Very good. And thank you to your staff and Steve Brodsky, who's here tonight in the audience. Thank you for working to see this project through. Who would care to introduce? Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Our next item is Resolution twenty-two-i. It's also an introduction. This is a warning of bid and authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with Barrett Paving for Bellbrook Avenue, which runs from Peace Pipe Trail to Allison Avenue in its resurfacing project. Mr. City Manager, I'll let you explain this.
Thank you, sir. Last year, the city's engineering staff applied for grant funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission to rehab a portion of Bellbrook Avenue. This would be a portion of roadway from Peace Pipe Trail to Allison Avenue. The project involves the full width restoration or resurfacing of Bellbrook Avenue, along with the replacement of sections, selected sections of curb and sidewalk. The total project estimate as submitted for the grant funding was six hundred and seven thousand three hundred dollars. The approved grant funding for the project with the state was up to seventy-four percent of the project, which is four hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, with the city's local match being twenty-six percent remaining, and that's equivalent to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, based on the original bid. On Thursday, or excuse me, estimate, rather. On Thursday, the twenty-seventh of January, the city received three bids from contractors to complete the project. We were pleasantly surprised that these bids came in substantially under the original engineer's estimate. Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated was a low bidder. We have a good track record of projects with them here in our community, so we have confidence that they'll be able to do this project successfully. So our engineering staff is recommending moving forward with Barrett for this project, and we're requesting introduction of Resolution twenty-two-i this evening to facilitate that. It would be at a price point of four hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and forty-one cents. That came in substantially under bid, which benefits us and the state, and is a good way to bring additional completion of this important bit of roadway back to a better condition.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for the City Manager regarding this paving project?
Yes. Mr. President, yeah. Brent, when's the, when's the plan, actual resurfacing plan to happen?
I'm sorry?
Is that planned to happen in this, this calendar year?
Yeah, that's for this calendar year.
This calendar year?
Yeah. I don't think we have an exact timeline with them yet. Obviously, a firm like that has a lot of jobs they're doing in the region.
Sure.
So once we do get an estimate on the likely timeline that they'll be here, we'll pass that along.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Could I hear from the engineer about the project?
Sure. Our city engineer, Mr. Berger, is here. I think Councilman Scrivens has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. How was the priority for this part of Lower Bellbrook selected?
Well, I'll answer you this way. It's been our mission, as you all know, for probably about the last four years, to knock all Bellbrook out. So we've been going section by section by section by section.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Pretty close.
Mr. President, it's worth noting that these types of state funds, we are limited in the types of roadways based on how much traffic they have and their importance in terms of regional transportation. So this is a qualifying roadway where, for example, a residential street in a residential neighborhood typically, almost exclusively, they do not, they do not qualify for this type of funding. So that's why we prioritize these, because the grant funding's available, and obviously, given the amount of traffic and the importance to the economy and local commerce.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I've got one more.
Brent, I would just note, too, we set a completion date in that big packet for June thirtieth.
So it'll be done by June thirtieth?
June thirtieth. Writing it down.
Just one quick comment. Chris, if you wouldn't mind passing on to Public Service, that I'm almost a hundred percent positive that there's a bad valve at industrial in Bellbrook. So check with Fringe on that.[1707.51]
So check with Fringe on that. I'm, I'm pretty positive we were on a main break, what, five years ago and, and that valve was shot. So if it needs replaced, possibly getting it replaced before they, they repave that section would be awesome.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
I presume that all the infrastructure now has been done. You know, we have a, a problem. We pave it and then we'll come back and cut it up. So has all the infrastructure, the slip lining and everything, everything's been done, right?
Yeah, we'll double check that and, you know, we, we have been, made it our mission to make sure that we're getting, doing water and sewer beforehand. And I will readily admit, we're not doing that as far in advance, usually the same year. We'd like to be at least one full cycle ahead of a repaving job, you know, in terms of any water sewer replacement.
Right.
But again, the, the age of a lot of our infrastructure, even if, if we've gone out and done some preventative rehabilitation, there's always, there's always a possibility. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Who would care to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
Introduced by Councilwoman Dean, thank you. The next item is an administrative motion approving the schedule of bills tonight in the amount of $244,000. Mr. Duke?
I have nothing to note on the bills this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke regarding the schedule of bills tonight?
We got outshooted this way.
We have no questions. Who would make the motion to approve the bills?
Senate.
Moved by Councilman Branum, thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any questions, concerns regarding the bills tonight? This time I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschul?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is appointed officials' reports at this time. I'm actually going to start with the finance director.
I have nothing for you this evening.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Duke? Moving on, Madam Law Director.
I just have one thing I want to report on to council. I did a One Ohio webinar last Friday. It involved one of the attorneys who had negotiated the deal. If you recall, part of the One Ohio settlement was the county, or excuse me, the state was divided up into regions.
Right.
There are eight metropolitan regions, which is just single county. That would be Franklin County where Columbus is, Cuyahoga, Hamilton. The rest were all non-metropolitan and they are made up of multiple counties. We are in Region 14, which consists of seven different counties.
Wow.
There is no set government structure on how One Ohio is to work. That was not part of the deal. Each region is to set up their own structure on to how they're to govern themselves. So you've got seven counties, all the villages, all the cities, all the townships and the counties themselves in each of those seven counties to come up with a governmental structure for the entire region. Yeah. I have not heard, and I don't know if the city manager has, or now, I've gotten emails since that from other law directors, not in Green County, but within our region, Mercer County, Butler County and Warren County. What I would like to suggest, and I wanted to get council's blessing before I did that, I would like to get in touch with and work with David Hayes, the county prosecutor, as he represents the county and all 12 of the townships. We could then bring in the law director for Beaver Creek, the law director for Fairborn, the law directors for the smaller villages. We can come up with a structure of how we want to do it here in the county. And if the other counties can do the same, then a representative from each of those seven counties could meet to decide what the government, the government structure for our region is going to be. I don't know any way else to do it. The state is not leading the charge on this. The One Ohio agreement itself leaves it up to the various regions to set their own structures. Each region does get one representative on the state foundation board. The regions themselves will not be in charge of the money. What the region, whatever government structure we come up with, a board of directors, whatever, they will recommend projects. You submit a project, if it's a project that benefits the majority of the region, that then gets sent up to the state and the state funds those projects. The foundation, the state foundation, funds those projects directly. We of course, will get a direct contribution. This is an 18-year agreement. The MOU is 18 years. So we're looking at almost two decades of, of needing to be able to get some kind of structure in place. The state's not going to lead the charge on this. I thought we could at least lead the charge in Green County. If I can let other law directors in other counties know, this is what we're going to do here in Green, if they can do the same thing in their counties, then at least, you know, maybe we can get one or two representatives from each county to sit down at the table and say, this is what we want our regional board to look like. So if council's okay with that, I, I think that's the best way to proceed.
This was a hot topic last night at mayors and managers. So Montgomery County is unique in that they are a singular county. So Commissioner Dodge came and spoke to this matter, looking for representation from Montgomery County, from the, from the different mayors there. But I will tell you, there was a lot of confusion and a lot of questions from the different counties. We were basically told, good luck. I mean, really, that was kind of the sentiment.
If you're a metropolitan county and you're dealing with one county and just the townships and villages and cities in that county, certainly not so hard. When you're a region like us where there's seven different counties and every political subdivision within those counties, that's, that's huge.
And there seemed to be a timeline, some urgency in the timeline with that too.
Well, the sooner we get it done, the sooner we get somebody on the board and the sooner the money will start flowing.
So, Mr. President, I've got a question. I have a couple of questions here. So, so just step back again and help us understand, I thought there, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, I thought there was a set of the One Ohio that would come directly to us as a municipality, is that correct?
There is, yes. We will get a direct payment. What this region does, Region 14 and the state foundation, they had divided the money up. The state of Ohio gets a chunk. Each political subdivision gets a direct payment. We will get a direct payment. But the bulk of the money will go to this One Ohio foundation, which is a nonprofit.
And that was 55% of it, right?
Yes.
55% goes to this foundation.
Every single region gets a seat on that board. That's the one thing they did decide. The state foundation board, every single region gets a seat. So our region as a whole would be represented. That foundation board will decide over the 18 years, the money that goes to that foundation, how does it get spent in those different regions?
Do we have a sense of the dollar amount that will be going to the state foundation?
I could probably, the percentage, I think, was around 46% of the overall settlement.
So, so are we talking 10 million, 100 million, a billion? What are we talking about, the state?
I can't give you an exact number. I haven't seen those yet.
The whole number is 800 plus million. That is the overall number was 800.
For Ohio?
For Ohio, the whole number was 800 some million.
Well, you've got two different settlements here.
Okay.
You've got the Johnson and Johnson settlement, which will flow through One Ohio, and then you've got the settlement that was against the three pharmaceutical distributors. So you've got two different amounts there. And my understanding is a lot of that payment, I mean, it's an 18-year MOU. It's not going to be one giant chunk. It's going to come in and kind of be spread over that 18-year period.
Do we, do we, and I'm not necessarily speaking directly to you, but to the folks that deal at the county level, do we not, do we not currently have any entity that represents multiple municipalities within the county from a development perspective? That we could already use that structure or do we, I'm just, I'm just curious as to why we're actually trying to create a new structure to represent our county?
Oh, I don't know. No other, similar NVRPC.
Well, NVRPC is a, is a, is a clearinghouse for a lot of federal through the state dollars for transportation purposes and things like that. But again, that's, that's the entire Miami Valley. That's a multi-county region. There's really no leadership council on the, on the county level. Now, as a matter of fact, you know, just what, two weeks ago, working with the Beaver Creek Township Administrator, we've, we've started a quarterly meeting of all the mayors, excuse me, of all the city managers and township administrators. And we've begun meeting quarterly, so there's some, there's some, you know, efforts at collaboration at that level. But in, you know, and I think that the county administrator is involved in that as well. But there's no formal collaborative structure for, really for any purpose countywide that would involve leadership from all of those different jurisdictions.
How many, how many regions are there altogether in Ohio?
19.
19.
We're number 14.
Correct.
I know it's hard to believe that an agreement would be reached by government to spend a lot of money and have no structure on how, but that's exactly what it's.
And the regions were established by the state though? Someone had to establish.
The regions were established as part of the settlement, as part of the MOU. There are eight metropolitan regions, which consists of just one or two counties. And then the rest are all considered non-metro regions and they consist of multiple counties. But they did not dictate in the One Ohio MOU what each region sets for its own board. So each region in Ohio is going to have to come up with its own. This is how we're going to govern ourselves.
And who established the foundation at the state level?
It's part of the enablement.
They did do that as part of the settlement. The, the paperwork has been filed to create the One Ohio Foundation as a nonprofit.
And do we know who's on the board for that?
The, each region, there will be 19.
Will be the board.
Yes. There will be 19 board members.
Okay.
The Ohio governor gets to appoint, I think it's three members. The Ohio attorney general gets to appoint three members. And then there are four members appointed by the Ohio General Assembly. And then the rest is one representative from each region.
So our, our region has to establish some framework to select our.
To be able to appoint someone to sit on that board.
Of seven counties.
Of seven counties. Right.
Which will be one of many board members who will decide what happens with $440 million. What could possibly go wrong?
Sounds like a close one.
Seems easy.
It just seems to me that the easiest way to start it is at the county level. For us to make a decision on, at, at the county level.
Yes.
How many representatives do we think should be on the board? How are we as a county going to choose the one or two representatives to the Region 14 board that will represent our county and then encourage the other counties to do the same thing? Once the, the representatives are decided, then they can get together and say, okay, Region 14, we're going to, we're seven counties, we're going to have a seven-member board. Every county appoints one. And here's how long they serve and.
Right. But at this point, there's no, there's not even a board structure for this, for the Region 14.
Nope.
This is all happening this week.
It's all in the plenary stage.
All right. Any other questions?
So we've got to start somewhere. It seems to me if we start at the county level, that'll be the easiest way to do it.
All right.
So I, I guess there's two, two ways to look at this. One is you either say, hey, if we're very proactive, then we get to set the agenda and potentially take the lead towards obtaining the funds or influencing the funds. And the other way to look at it is, this, this is going to be so arduous and the possibility of ever seeing any money is so small that we could, we could take a backseat and, and just say, we're just going to observe. Right? So I, I'm just, I'm putting that out there.
We, we could wait and see if another county's going to take the lead. We could wait and see if someone else in Green County's going to step up and take the lead. But we know it needs to be done.
Right.
I'm hearing from law directors in other counties, hey, what are you guys doing? So if, if, you know, one person in each county, be it the county prosecutor or a law director or whoever takes the lead and, hey, let's at least get this moving in our county, we can get each of the seven counties to the table, we can then at least say, this is what our Region 14 is going to look like and then we can pick our one person to, to serve on the, on the foundation board.
On the foundation board. Correct.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer a resolution.
Yes, sir.
That we appoint Madam Law Director as our interim representative to at least form the plenary stage to get the rudiments of the organization together so we can eventually get a disbursement of the funds that's sitting there waiting on us.
Did you hear that? And is that necessary?
I don't think so. I, I just, with your blessing, I'll get ahold of David Hayes, Mike Mayer and the law director for Beaver Creek and say, hey, we need to do this.
Yeah, I think we could put it in a resolution. I think we should. Yes.
Nothing wrong with taking the lead.
Right. Who would like to say? So we have a motion by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the vice president to appoint Ms. Fisher. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Can, can we get a little clarity on what the motion is exactly?
Absolutely.
We'd like to appoint our law director as, as our interim person to formulate and get everybody on board to formulate this planning committee until we can get something on paper so we can start moving forward to get a distribution of the funds that's sitting there waiting on us. So the sooner we move with dispatch and show our leadership and organization skills, then sooner we probably can get a disbursement.
With the ultimate goal, that our finance director will be our Region 14 representative.
Exactly. That is the goal.
That is the goal.
Let's have a just make a motion for that. Forget the other counties.
Thank you. All right. Is that clear?
I'd like to amend the motion and have both the, our law director and our finance director work in tandem to make this happen.
Even better.
His shoes taste good when he eating them. No, but seriously, I'd like that motion to have them both working in tandem to form the plenary committee.
Do you second that, I mean?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to read that motion verbatim at some point.
Can we, um.
Yeah, could you read that back?
So, go ahead.
So we have the original motion. Who was the second?
Vice President.
Okay. Great. All right. For roll call?
Yes, roll call.
Vice President Urschul?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
If council's on board, that's step one. So now we just got 999 more and we can get paid.
All right. Anything else from the law director tonight?
Oh, I think that's enough.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we'll move on to city manager. Mr. Mayor.
Well, first want to thank council for not giving me any more work tonight. I did want to take a couple of moments and just provide some background information, sort of update and some commitments stemming from our significant weather event this past week. We, as I suggested earlier, we had a weather event that we really haven't seen an equivalent of in, in over a decade. And depending on whether you were on Kinsey Road or perhaps down on Ledbetter, you, you saw a pretty significant range in conditions, but generally, we saw from a tenth, a tenth to two tenths inches, inch of ice, two to three inches of sleet and then six to eight inches of snow. And that range of conditions actually, in large part, caused a lot of additional headache for us. And preceding all of that was a couple of inches of rain all day Wednesday, as you remember. So we were unable to pre-treat on Wednesday and, and then had these range of conditions that created a much more difficult dynamic to treat. As always with these types of events, you can expect that there's a portion of the community that's not going to be entirely satisfied with the service delivery. We expect that. Having said that and acknowledge that there's always room for improvement, I do want to give kudos to our staff. We had folks in beginning 10:00 PM on Wednesday and we had folks in constantly around the clock into Saturday late afternoon and early evening. Brought another eight-man crew back in on Sunday to do some additional work. And in that process, had a couple of water main breaks as well. And so we, we had a significant effort and that those gentlemen came in after hours all night long away from their families, out in that danger, the dangerous conditions to help keep our community safe. And so I think we do owe them a pat on the back and a thank you. Uh, having said that, I do think there's opportunities for growth and improvement. Uh, I want to extend our apology to the folks over on Whisper Lane, Kathy's Way. Uh, I went out there, uh, Saturday, I went out both Friday and Saturday to every neighborhood in the city to kind of for myself gauge conditions. And I happened to stumble that way both days, saw a couple ladies out on Saturday, uh, shoveling their drive and just had an opportunity to talk with them. And, uh, and extend a, a commitment that we're gonna, we're gonna evaluate our routes and understand a little bit better, um, why certain areas always do get hit last in, in terms of treatment. And part of that is because of the nature of routes and where roads are located. We always start with the major roads first and work our way down to the, to the smallest, smaller, least used streets. And, uh, that does result in certain areas persistently not getting the same level of service. Uh, based on a lot of conversation with public service this week, you know, I think it's time that we take a look at, uh, the, the approach that we take, the, the four quadrant system that we have set up. Our community has grown since we first started doing that. Uh, so we probably, probably need to make some adjustments and look at some different, uh, different approaches. We've also, also talked about, um, employing technology to help. Um, the ability to, to have systems in real-time monitor which streets have been, have been, uh, completed or have been treated. Uh, would give our supervisory staff the ability, uh, to redirect resources where needed and so forth. Uh, it could be a much more efficient operation. So that's something we're evaluating as well. In the midst of this event, we also had, uh, our fuel, uh, delivery that was scheduled, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, for Thursday, was unable to get here. Uh, that fuel finally came in on Friday, which of course resulted in us having to use some local, uh, service stations. And then our fuel system went completely down, uh, the motherboard, motherboard failed on Saturday, uh, went completely down. So we, again, we're, we're back, uh, um, at square one in terms of fuel. So a few little things that came up, uh, that threw us for some, some curves. And, uh, but again, the guys adjusted, did that really well and kudos to the supervisors as well, uh, who are not paid overtime and were here all that extra time. Uh, having said all of that, um, this event, uh, excluding, um, any public safety overtime was, was in the ballpark of seventy-five thousand dollars just up through the weekend. That doesn't count normal hours and additional resources and materials this week. So this is a very expensive service. I mean, minute for minute, inch for inch, there are probably few services we provide that are more expensive than roadway treatment. But it is essential to keep our community open, to keep safety routes open, to keep commerce flowing. Um, and again, I, I think, uh, the guys did a great job. I think there's room for improvement. There are some areas of the city that are definitely not getting the same, uh, level of services quickly as we would like for them to get and quickly as other areas. Um, so, um, again, we'll be evaluating that and, and looking at, uh, conditions. One other, uh, point to note, just, you know, random things that happened, uh, Council recall, we had some conversation, uh, earlier this year, uh, with the approval of some fleet. We talked about delays in fleet. Uh, a couple of the, uh, trucks that we'd ordered last year were not delivered last year, we're still waiting on them. We have since had to take that fleet out of service, so we actually didn't have our normal contingent of fleet to even be out on the roads. Um, so just, you know, unique conditions that, that made the challenge that much more difficult. So again, opportunities for improvement, we recognize that. I think nonetheless, the crews did a very good job of what, uh, was a far more significant storm than we've seen in, in many years. Uh, so we appreciate the patience of folks and, uh, we also experienced a lot of gratitude from people in the community as well. And that's good to see the guys, I think, need that pat on the back every now and then, so. Um, uh, can certainly entertain any questions on that. Also, just wanted to point out that, um, we will have our city offices closed on February twenty-first, that's before our next meeting. Uh, so I wanted to point out to our public, uh, for President's Day and Observance of President's Day, we will be closed on the twenty-first. Um, and then just a final reminder to Council, uh, our retreat on Saturday and we'll be sending out some additional information in preparation for that tomorrow. So if you have any questions, I can answer those. If not, that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman? Other than thank you, thank public service, uh, again, um, a thankless job, but necessary, so.
You know, I think, um, people don't realize that we, we have eighteen million square feet of asphalt in the roads in the city. And that's equivalent of a two-lane road between here and Cleveland. And so if you think about hav- having all those conditions and then trying to clean and, and clear a two-lane road all the way to Cleveland with, with hundreds of cul-de-sacs along the route where you, you have to go into, with hundreds of vehicles parked along the roadway, which you're trying desperately to avoid hitting and are getting in the way of doing that. And that road is operating that whole time while you're trying to clear it. And, and you literally have about, uh, eight thousand driveways that intersect with that two-lane road that every individual would like to see their driveway entrance be cleared a- along the route. And, and everybody would like to see this all done in one day, right? And that's, that's, that's an impossible task to have happen. And that's, that's a ma- this was, this was a massive undertaking to do this, especially, and I just say, Chris, without being able to pre-treat and realize, not, this was not only clearing, but they, they had to clear and treat, right? Because as they're clearing the snow, we had to treat the ice that was there underneath that and then clear that once it had been treated against as well too. And, uh, and as Councilman Branham had brought up, I really appreciate your post on Facebook, that in the middle, in the middle of that, you guys are dealing with broken, uh, water mains and, and things like that that are critical, that, that are, that are taking the staff too. So I, I know it's, you know, you, the rest of us are just sitting in our house, you know, we wake up in the morning, we're shoveling our driveway and we see this, you know, hump of snow at the end of our driveway. And, and listen, we don't, we don't remove snow from the city, we just clear it from the center lanes. And, uh, there's, there's, uh, there's no way that we could ever clear everybody's driveway at that point. And just like I said, there's no way that everybody's gonna get their street cleared off at, at the identical, uh, same amount of time. I mean, it's, this is just a, just a massive undertaking. So I, I know there, there are some, there are some instances of that, but I just would, would, uh, I think folks just need to step back and realize the scope of what happened. And, and the fact that, that, you know, by Saturday, you pretty much could go anywhere in the city you wanted to go, uh, you know, at that point, which is, which is amazing. You know, within two days that we could, we could be cleared like that. Uh, and, uh, just, we just need to have some patience with folks, uh, wh- while we're doing this. And, uh, and Brent, like you said, there's, there's always opportunities for, for, for doing better work. But, uh, I, I just, I, I was, you know, personally just amazed at, at how clear things were by Saturday and, and, and the amazing job that the group, the group did, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Um, next on our agenda is reports of boards, commissions and committees. Um, our first committee is Board for Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities. That's now chaired by Mayor Mays.
Thank you, sir. We were canceled this last time, but we will be meeting soon as we have the Community Easter Egg coming up on April sixteenth. That is, um, planning to be in-person this year, so put that on your calendars, April sixteenth for the Community Easter Egg Hunt at Shawnee Park.
All right, thank you. Any questions regarding BRAC for the mayor? All right, our next item is Economic Development Advisory Board, uh, chaired by Vice President Urschel.
We, uh, we also canceled, uh, this initial meeting of the year. Uh, talking to staff, we felt it's important that, uh, a number of the items that we're gonna be discussing at our, at our offsite, uh, that we get some, some concurrence amongst the council first uh, about some of the, the economic priorities here that will be going forward. And then also have a, 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 an updated, uh, strategic view coming up. Uh, really our, our, our current, you know, strategies laid out in the X Plan, which is, which is, uh, was good at the time, but it, it needs to be refreshed at this point. So we will be meeting on, on the next time, but, uh, we've got some work to do with the staff and us as a council. Uh, once again, this, this group is, is to advise us as a council and I think it's critical that, that we as a council, uh, agree with, uh, with our direction uh, before we go out to the community to get some advice with that, so, so more work pending on that, yep.
Very good, thank you. Anyone have any comments regarding, uh, economic development for Vice President Urschel? All right, seeing none, um, I would make note that the February eighth Plating and Zoning Meeting was canceled, uh, due to the weather. Um, that is rescheduled for, uh, February seventeenth at six o'clock. Thank you. Uh, next is council comments. At this time, I'll start on my left with Councilwoman Dean.
Um, Hude.
Thank you. Hude, all right, very good. Um, Councilman Scribbins?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanna congratulate the city of Xenia, each and every one of us. We made it through this snowstorm. We were patient, it got removed. Our guys did a wonderful job. We have our friends and neighbors cleaning streets and sidewalks for us. Let's encourage our friends and neighbors. Uh, I mean, my, my driveway was backed up too. I had to get out there and exert some energy. But, uh, the streets got cleaned and how many water breaks did we have over the period?
I think over the weekend, three, and we had another significant one today.
Okay, so every day, coefficient of expansion and contraction, this stuff is gonna fail. The systems are gonna fail, it's just a matter of time. So when we get a chance to slip-line these systems, put in new pipes, new infrastructure, we're moving ahead. So just be patient as Councilman Urschel said, there's enough roads here, road mileage to go all the way to Cleveland. So you can't, everybody can't be first. Somebody has to be in the middle and regrettably, somebody has to be last, so that's that. Uh, glad to see Coach Brady here and, uh, Mr. Rodman and Mr. Engels. These are, uh, gentlemen who for sure have the interest of the park structure in the city at hand. When they were coming up, they had a park structure that supported them. And as a result, they came through their competitive years and they were champions. We have to get back to being that. We, we're lax on that. Our park structure is where our children develop. And that's where they move on to middle school, where they run into Coach Brady, and then to high school, where they run into Coach Harden and, uh, and the basketball coach. So we just need to take an aggressive role in our recreation. I mean, let's work on our mental health. Part of mental health is good recreation. Let them go out and play all day. We played all day in the sun, no sunscreen. And we drank out of, uh, water hose with the, with the, the rubber water hoses. It was okay. Yeah, let's, let's let our kids grow up, play in the dirt, you know? How many of us played in the dirt and made mud pies? Yeah, let's, let's, let our kids get, get a little something here where they can develop into people. Uh, we, we mollycoddle our kids. Uh, the snow removal was excellent. I don't care how you cut it, we got out of this pretty much unscathed and we was operating with one hand behind our back 'cause all of our equipment wasn't working. So thank you to the public service people. Everyone of them who got up, stayed up, stayed on the job and showed that they were loyal to Xenia. I appreciate that. In terms of, uh, pedestrian walkway, so we saw when we plowed the snow, pedestrians have a hard time. Okay, well pedestrians have a hard time on North Columbus Avenue between the circle and the city limits without the snow. There's no pedestrian walkway. So I'd like to see our city engineer meet with our county engineer and get some kind of pedestrian walkway plan developed where we can get state funding for that, 'cause I checked, there're pedestrian walkway fundings available. And, uh, we, we, we have to look at how we're asking our people to do what they do to make this place a better place to live. That's why we all live here in Xenia, 'cause it's a small town and it's a well-kept secret. It's someplace special and we don't wanna mess it up. And we mess it up by not taking our park and doing what we have to do. Trash man day, you know some stuff's gonna blow. If you're going out and getting your cans, you see some rubbish, pick it up. Don't let it blow someplace else. I mean, that's just not being a Xenian. And finally, Mr. President, our budget priorities, we'll be refining those and, uh, I'm glad to see that we at least have Lexington Park at least in the conversation. Uh, I grew up in that park like most of the rest of the, the, the guys that, that lived in East End. And that park not only has a sentimental value, but it has a utilitarian value for our social development. If we, if Lexington Park was not there, there'd be a significant void in, in the park structure in the city. Uh, Spring Hill Park used to be a baseball diamond. There's no real baseball diamond city-owned in Xenia now. Now, we go to the Y R C. and we piggyback with them. But we've stepped back tremendously from our commitment to recreation. So I'd like to see with these new COVID fundings available, that there's, there's, and when we spin off some of these non-productive properties that were heretofore sitting vacant, not producing any income, some of the income we produce from these properties will ought to earmark for our recreation structure. So with that, Mr. President, I just wanna thank everybody for, uh, being loyal Bengal fans. I'm a Steeler fan, but this week I have to wear black and gold 'cause I want A F C. to win. And, uh, I see all my Bengal buddies here, we got one Browns fan here, so we got Browns and Steelers and then the Bengals, so.
This is as close as I got.
A F C. is gonna win. So with that, Mr. President, I thank you. And I thank the citizens of Xenia for just being patient with everybody. This COVID thing is hard on everybody. So don't think you're the only cookie in the bag. There are other people that might, might be a little worse off than you, so just, just be patient with people and show your love. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Scribbins, Councilman Branham.
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback on what everybody else has said, kick-ass job by Public Service Department. Um, I think that they did a phenomenal job.
Sure.
Um, I was about checking out different areas and stuff like that. You always have the, the people posting on Facebook complaining because they've got nothing better to do. Um, I just wanna say that they did a phenomenal job, um, considering the circumstances. Sewer backups, let alone water main breaks and snow plowing, you know, those are all the same employees that's out plowing the roads, that's out fixing the water main break. So they're going from taking a cold shower, um, that's already nasty and cold outside, so cold water on top of that, just think about taking your spigot all the way to cold and taking a shower when it's thirty, you know, thirty degrees or less outside, single digits, and then jumping back into a truck and continuing to plow streets. So I guarantee you that that's what a lot of those individuals have done, um, so just phenomenal job by them. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Branham. Councilman Dean?
I just have one thing to add up, kind of echoing to what they said about public service. But today I was at a job as a plumber and, uh, was looking for the water meter, but it was hidden under about a foot of snow. And one of the public service guys ran by in their truck, um, stopped real quick, jumped out, this metal detector found it in about two seconds, probably saved me a good thirty minutes if not an hour of time, so I really appreciate him. Uh, I didn't get his name unfortunately, but I would like to just say thank you.
So, thank you. All right, um, Vice President Urschel?
I wanna thank the gentleman that came and, and are representing the community and, and, uh, and, uh, looking to help, help us reinvigorate Lexington Park and, and a lot of the activities that go on there. And I, and I would just say that, um, we, we, and we, we've discussed this before, we, we as a city don't have the resources to manage the activities there. And, but, uh, one, one of the things we, we found out, uh, when we had the, uh, Community Day there is there's, there's a lot of organizations that are willing to, to come and provide activity. Uh, and it doesn't have to be the city generating that, uh, from Wilberforce in Central State and Cedarville and Athletes in Action and a whole bunch of different folks that said, if, if, if you, if you work to get kids there, we'll, we'll come and help you with that. And, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm all in on this, uh, and would love to meet with you, you folks. I think one of the critical things is though, is that we, uh, as, as you're getting your, your side of this, to say, yeah, we've got a, uh, you know, whether it's a Lexington Park Community Group or, uh, however we wanna describe that, that says, yeah, we, we will, we'll take the lead on, uh, on, on organizing the community to use the park and, and we, we can help you guys, uh, with, uh, you know, upgrades and maintenance of the park and then also interfacing to other organizations. But we just, our park department is what, one, one person? Is that fair statement?
Two now, but.
Two, right. So, uh, and, and this, this really is a, is a comment as we look forward to, to each of our, you know, um, uh, community areas around each of our parks. And I'm, you know, I'm thinking about this for, you know, I'm over in Sterling Green. And one of the things I'd like, I'm, I'm, I'm interested getting, is a Sterling Green Association there to get folks together, say, hey, here's what we'd like, how we'd like to see our park used and, and get some activities going. Uh, I, I think a lot of times, for, for whatever reason, we've, we've stepped back, we've, we've assumed the city was gonna organize all these activities and it isn't gonna happen, there's just no way. Uh, but we, we've got just tremendous resources there in those local areas. And I think that the partnership is something and, and I think it's, it's key for us, with, with the limited resources we have to invest, those, 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 uh, uh, parts of the town where folks are interested and are stepping forward are gonna be the ones that we ought to be doing our investment in first because we've got a partner there to work with. So anyways, uh, I, I really appreciate you guys taking the time and meeting with us and doing that. And I'm really looking forward to, to, to using this as one of our, our first steps forward to say, hey, let's, let's get this moving. Let's, let's, uh, uh, get the activities happening and, and the involvement is gonna give hope to folks in the area. And, uh, and I, and I think this will be a great example for some other parts of our town as well too as we move forward. So thanks, gentlemen, yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Mays?
Thanks. A couple of things that I had the opportunity to attend over the last two weeks. Um, Katie Vedder invited many of us to go out to the Wendy's grand opening and just, um, do a ribbon cutting out there and, um, had a chance to see the inside of the new rebuild and, uh, they've put a lot of money into it and really invested it here, so congratulations to them, it's going well. Um, on February second, had a chance with Mr. Brodsky to attend the, uh, Annual Dayton Development Coalition Annual Luncheon and get an update of what's happening in the Miami Valley on a much larger scale and how that affects all of us within our communities. Um, talked to a lot of people there, so it was really a, a very profitable luncheon. Um, on Saturday, February fifth, Doug Yates puts, he, many years ago, put together the Miami Valley Tournament Association. Um, it's, uh, for a lot of different dojos in the Miami Valley and young people coming out. Well, I shouldn't say young people, 'cause it's people volleyball, just, uh, coming out, they, they do these different tournaments, earn points and then receive awards. So there was eight inductees that night and then a hundred and eighteen award winners. Um, had an opportunity to pass out letters to each of them and congratulate them for the work that they've done. And it was a really fun evening to see the energy in the room at the Schindler Banquet Center, filled the room and, um, just see people really investing in these kids' lives and having, um, yeah, I'll just say, they, they invested a lot in these kids' lives, so it was very exciting. Um, on February ninth, um, just this past Wednesday, attended a Friends of Scouting breakfast. Um, Becky Smith put that on, she's, uh, oversees, uh, Boy Scouts Association. I can't tell you her exact role, was in Green County, but I know that. I know that Green County is where she focuses a lot of her efforts and just to hear about what's happening in scouting and the, the young men and women that are participating in that and a lot of good things happening. That evening, I also had a chance to go to the mayors and managers where we did, they said, talk about this subject with the MOU and hear from Judy Dodge, the Commissioner of Montgomery County, and some of their plans and how they're moving forward as a singular county. So, very interesting. Obviously, with every, what everybody else said, I would thank public service, what a great job those guys did. I, I know some of the negative complaints that I received, and so I know that they received some of that as well, and that takes a toll. And, and it's frustrating. I will say, I felt frustrated because, and it was very defensive, because just like Cody said, they are working so hard and so many hours and putting so much effort into this. And we need to just say thank you and, and be patient and congratulate them and just very appreciative of all the work that they did. So, thank you for all those hours and hard work. I also wanted to congratulate Captain Beagle on his 20 years of service in the fire division. What a great guy. Just want to say, personally, he is just, he works hard for this community, he loves this community. You have a conversation with him, and you know that his heart's here. So, he, this is not, you can just tell this is not just a job to him. This is a way for him to serve and show his passion for the Xenia community. So, congratulations to him. And then, last, this is just a personal thing, there's a conference coming up, April 1st and 2nd called Made to Thrive. It's gonna be at the Xenia Community Center, and it happens to be featuring a speaker who is an author that I absolutely love, Dr. Tammy Smith. I've had a chance to meet her and read her books, and I'm helping to put the conference together. So, it's gonna benefit the Emerged Center, specifically the, the work that Cynthia Stempel is doing through the Coffee Hub. And so, if you have a chance to look that up, if you go to Coffee Hub's website, you can find out information about it. But I wanted to mention it tonight because the tickets are on sale until February 14th, the prices will go up. So, if you have any interest in it, please contact me, anybody at Coffee Hub, we can tell you about it. It's gonna be a great event, those Friday night and Saturday, and very excited about it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mayor Mays got a lot of things tonight. I'll try, I'll try to make each one very brief. First of all, Happy Valentine's Day coming up Monday 14th. Happy President's Day, February 21st. Those will happen before our next council meeting scheduled for February 24th. Also like to say, if you're a runner, get your shoes on, start running. YMCA, April 3rd, will be the Ohio River Road Runners Marathon, coming back to Xenia. That's both a half marathon and a full marathon. That is a Boston Marathon qualifier. So, had the opportunity years ago to do that, only did the half, took me a long time, but I got across the finish line. Takes a lot of volunteers, so they'll take your help if you have that day free. So, if you're just now tuning in, you're seeing all the Bengals stuff on the screen right now, I want to let you know, not one city dollar paid for the signs or the balloons, that was my money. Little background, I've been a Bengals season ticket holder since 2013, so I've sat through some pretty dismal seasons, some pretty bad games. The first home game this year that I got to go to, it was a Thursday night game, Jacksonville. Actually, I'm sorry, I did see the Vikings game. Went on a Thursday night game, we came back to like 21 points to, to beat Jacksonville Jaguars that night. And in the bathroom, some guy came in and said, oh, you guys heard about the Super Bowl? And I'm like, yeah. He goes, well, we're going. And if you would've told me like three, three games into the season, the Bengals were going to the Super Bowl, I would've said he's either high or he's drunk. So, and then you know. But, you know, it's taken ages. 33 years to get to this. I remember as a kid, watching the Super Bowl in '81. I remember I worked in restaurant management in '88 or '89 when we went and played the 49ers again. But this has even grown bigger. And the, the implications of this is just phenomenal. This is an Ohio-grown team. If you haven't been aware, Joey Burrow is an Ohio native from Athens. And to turn of this franchise, this Bengals organization, from cellar dwellers to Super Bowl contenders, I get off my soapbox. But some of the inspirational stories from like players like T. Higgins came from a crack family. Evan McPherson, just his testimony, it's phenomenal. So, congratulations to the Bengals. I'll be watching on Sunday. So, hoo-day, Super Bowl '56, Los Angeles, playing the Rams. Rams have one of our former players on, on their team that, that will be pairing off again. So, just super excited. So, I, I've been very hard time focusing this week because of the game, I'm very one-sided here. But I, again, I want to thank everybody that watched tonight and their council colleagues to indulge me tonight in going into the orange and black theme. So, before we close out, Pastor Sher, we see you're here. Thank you for coming. We did start the meeting without you at 6:00, but we're glad you're here. So, we're gonna invite you to come to the podium and close us out.
Yes.
Okay?
That's good.
And everybody want to rise? And then, we'll do the motion to adjourn after.
My heavenly Father, we just feel the thanks for the opportunity that we have, the freedoms that we have to come before you, to come before this body and take up the business that's run this city. We thank you for all those who serve here. And we just ask that you always give them wisdom, give them understanding and patience. And we just ask that you, with God, you direct us all in what we do and what we say each and every day. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Do we have a motion to, okay, motion by Councilwoman Dean, do we have a second?
A second.
Segmented by the mayor. Real call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Scrivens?
Aye.
Thank you for watching.